...of the municipal act. Council has provided with an update concerning ongoing negotiations as it relates to a proposed land transaction between the town and another party. The town's still subject to confidentiality obligations at this time, but it is expected that more details will be made public at the first meeting or the second meeting in October. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. With that said, we have, do we have any declarations of conflict of interest? And I see none. Thank you. I'm looking for an adoption of the published agenda. We do have an addition. Mr. O'Shea, could you tell us what that addition is?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Counselor Bjorkman has asked for an item to be added to new business this evening. It pertains to a letter of support for the Western Lake Erie National Marine Conservation Area Proposal. The details of that were provided to council earlier, and it's a request to be added, subject to your chair's discretion.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to receive the agenda. Counselor Volks and Counselor Rogers, all in favor? Oops, sorry. I've got a question here first. Counselor Bondi?
Thank you to the chair. Can I remove 15.1.2 and add it to the next council meeting? And I also have a notice of motion on CIPs for retail vitalization as well. Later.
Thank you. So all in favor of the agenda with those additions and subtractions? That's carried. Thank you. Onto adoption of the minutes of a regular council meeting from September the 4th. Moved by Counselor Bondi, supported by Counselor Volks. All in favor? That's carried. Special meeting minutes from September the 4th. Moved by Counselor Volks and Counselor Snively. All in favor? That's carried. Special council meeting minutes from September the 11th. Moved by Counselor Bondi and supported by Counselor Bjorkman. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And we have one public presentation this evening, and that is from StanTech Consulting. And Dr. Lee?
Thank you, everyone. So today, I'd just like to give a highlight of on the town's direction of town administration, what have done on Essex World One sanitary and stone sewer system, or mainly including study and improvement we have done since January 2015. So the highlight of the presentation, including the introduction, then would be a highlight sanitary sewer and sanitary sewer study and improvement, as well as a stone water study improvement. And then talk about the benefit of sewer study on planning and development. At the end will be the closer comments from the town administration. So as many of you are aware of that Essex World One system will be a separate sewer system. It's, as shown on that slide, there are the two pipe that the blue one, it's a stone sewer. So basically, the collect that convenes rainwater to watercourses which outlet to the water bodies, the drains, the Detroit River. In this case, it would be Detroit River and Sinclair Beach, Sinclair Lake. Then the sanitary sewer system is in that the yellow, light yellow, that be collect and convenes sanitary sewage to the treatment facility, then discharge it to the water bodies after treatment. So in recent years, the town has experienced basement flooding event, especially on August 11, 2014, and September 5, 2015. So that are the main reason cause of basement flooding, there's two reasons. One is the climate changes. So in recent years, increasing rainfall in the region have a significant impact on municipal sewer system. And also that because that that will be significant amount of stone water pour on the town street, that'll be runoff, that be significantly increase the volume of stone water into the town's stone and sanitary sewer system that causing street and basement flooding. The reason is because the, and a second reason is aging stone and sanitary sewer system that significantly inflow and infiltrating into that sewer system. Also, there's a local drain sewers, stone sewers, it's designed for two years rainfall event, so that obviously cannot accommodate that severe storm event. So this is also is not that, this is regional where not only town of Essex, other municipality around Essex experience the same problem that has, this is regional issues. So the solution to basement and street flooding, so under that direction of town's administration, a series of study on sanitary and stone sewer system has been conducted. And also improvement to sanitary sewer system has also completed. So the next one, I will let Mike to complete that, the rest of the presentation.
Okay, the sanitary sewer study and improvements. Okay, the Essex sanitary sewer systems roughly, roughly contains two separate sewer sheds. The first being the northeast lagoon sewer shed, so that's the one shown in green over here. Generally, sewage or wastewater on the north side of Talbot Street flows northeasterly to this point where I'm pointing at right here, to a pumping station, which then lifts the sewage into the northeast lagoon treatment facility. The second service area in the town of Essex is the Essex Plant Service Area. So that is the area shown in blue here. Generally, wastewater on, or hoses on the south side of Talbot Street flow westerly and southerly till it reaches the Essex Plant Pumping Station here, where it pumps it up for treatment and ultimate discharge into the water course. So chronology of events. Since StanTech really got involved in this was about January 2015, the town initiated a series of sanitary and storm sewer projects to address basement flooding issues. From January to September, we conducted a bunch of field investigations. The first one being the flow monitoring to identify areas of rainwater, II, entering the sewer system and collect data for sewer modeling. The second being manhole inspections. There's about 500 manholes, sanitary manholes in the town of Essex. We inspected all of them to see if there are any defects with them. And the third being the sewer camera work and smoke testing. So camera work involves putting a camera down the sewer pipes to see if there's any leaks or defects in the pipes. And smoke testing generally involves blowing smoke into the sewer system to see if there's any cross connections. We did about six kilometers worth of sewer of this work. In September 2015, about three years ago today, we were here at council, and we presented the results of our study and our modeling. So the result that the sanitary basement flooding was caused from excessive rainwater entering the sewer system. The reason being primarily that there were some leaks in the sewer system, but the majority of the water was coming from private cross connections. The proposed improvement ultimately at that time was to increase the capacity of the sanitary sewer system, so meaning essentially we're allowing the water to come in, and we're pumping it out as quickly as we can possibly pump it out, so that the water level doesn't rise and get to the level of people's basements and flood back into their basements. In 2016 to 2017, the proposed improvement was implemented. It was constructed for about a cost of $5 million. And sewer repairs based on the, on the camera work and the smoke testing and the manhole inspections that we completed between January to September were completed, as well as introducing some, we call inflow inserts or pans into the manholes to mitigate rainwater getting into the sanitary sewer system. And that cost about $75,000. So the field investigations, like I said, involved inspecting of 500 manholes, the purpose being to inspect for leaks. The sewers were camered about six kilometers to inspect for defects and cross connections between the storm and sanitary. And updated the town's GIS interactive mapping. So the interactive mapping is generally, each town, each municipality has one, they keep records of their sewers and other underground infrastructure. So some of those records were aging a little bit, so we had, we had updated them based on our field investigations. These are some of the manholes that we found that were leaking. These are some of the worst ones. The majority of them were much better than this, that were found leaking and that were ultimately end up repaired, so that they were more watertight. The video and smoke testing, this picture here, figure 2A, just shows a camera going down the sewer. That just kind of gives you an idea of what, what the machine looks like. It's a little instrument on wheels, or it can also float in the sewage, and it can camera the pipe, and you can see the inside of the pipe to see if it's, if there's any defects in it. Figure B here shows results from some smoke testing. So this is, this is just a sanitary cleanout that either had a damaged cap or a missing cleanout cap, so rainwater could enter from the surface directly through this open pipe into the sanitary sewer system. And figure C here shows, shows a drain, a grate right there, that's connected to the sanitary sewer system. It should be connected to the storm sewer system. So rainwater in this person's property would drain towards that drain, and that would go right into the sanitary, whereas, whereas it should be going into the storm sewer system. So this sanitary model was built, two systems, like I said, the Essex Plant System and the Northeast Lagoon System. And the model was calibrated with flow monitoring data used, used that I discussed previously. And ultimately, what came from this model was the proposed improvement. So the improvements approach was, like I said, to remove the excessive II or rainwater from the sanitary system and store it at the treatment plant. And improvements involved a wet weather pumping station at Pumping Station Number Three, discharging directly to the plant. So this is right on fairview, kind of between the soccer fields and the baseball diamonds. A wet weather flow storage at the plant using decommissioned lagoons, and a large sewer along Bryan Avenue East. These are just some photos of the new works that were built. So this is the pumping station right here, a new generator and electrical building to house electrical equipment. This is a, that black piece of pipe right there is the force main that was installed along from Pumping Station Number Three all the way to the treatment plant to pump sewage out under high-flow conditions. So the repairs that were completed, that was, this was generally the construction project, the improvements overall, the $5 million improvements. These are the roughly $75,000 worth of repairs. So there are four types of repairs here. And the main purpose, like I said, was to mitigate rainwater from entering the sanitary sewer system. The first was these inflow inserts or pans. So if you look here at figure five, you can see one of these pans. Essentially, it's just a, roughly a plastic pan with a rubber gasket on the bottom of it, and it sits in between the manhole frame and, and the manhole cover. The manhole cover goes on top, and that manhole cover compresses the gasket and forms a watertight seal. So it doesn't allow any rainwater from, from the road surface to enter into the sanitary sewer system. Approximately 120 of those pans were installed in the 500 manholes in the town. This is one of those manholes that were found to be leaking. So ultimately, these were repaired. This photo here just shows a worker injecting the spots that were leaking on the manhole with a polyurethane compound that reacts with the water and, and kind of seals up any cracks in the manhole that were found to be leaking. The third type of repair is the repair on the actual sewer or the pipeline itself. So this kind of roughly shows a photo of, of a pipe that either has some cracks into or roots penetrating through it, so, meaning if there's cracks in the pipe or roots penetrating into it, the groundwater can get in the pipe. So this is after. So the pipe would be lined, and so that the, the cracks in the, in the outside of the pipe wouldn't, wouldn't have any water penetrating into the inside of the pipe. The last type of repair, mostly private sewer repairs on private property. These involve, the majority of them are either cleanouts or cross connections. So this just shows here in figure 10, a cleanout cap that was missing or damaged, and you can see smoke coming out of it. And then this just shows after the repair is made, a new cap was on there with a watertight seal, so that rainwater couldn't enter into the, into the top of that pipe. One of the other things that was introduced in, in the end of 2015 was this basement flooding subsidy program. Now, this is, other municipalities have had this, and it's a really great program. All it really does is it gives residents incentive to protect really their own private property, and also contribute to the reduction in storm water entering the system. So overall, improving the system's performance. So the town's implemented this in 2015, and there's different incentives that they have, either installing backwater baths or subpumps, or, or disconnecting foundation drains. This was something that was initiated and kind of another little, small, but necessary step to kind of get the private side involved and, and help them, prevent them from flooding. At the same time, it also reduces the rainwater going to the sanitary system. So the storm sewer system. The storm sewer system in Essex is a little bit more complicated than the sanitary system. It consists of five catchments, shown there, over two watersheds. So the first watershed is the Puce River watershed, and this generally is the area in blue, the Meadstone catchment, the Meadstone Ave drainage area, and the Hobgood Avenue and the Hobgood Street drainage area, which is the area in yellow. This line kind of separates the two watersheds along Talbot Street again. So generally, the area in blue and the area in, in yellow drain to the Puce River and flow northerly to the, to Lake St. Clair. The three catchments in the bottom, the one in pink, the Rush catchment, the one in green, the South Talbot catchment, and the one in yellow, the Iron Town Line catchment, all are part of the Canard River subwatershed. And ultimately, all the runoff in these catchments flows to the Canard River, which heads westerly and discharges out into the Detroit River. This just kind of shows a little bigger map of the county, and you can see the Puce River subwatershed ultimately outlets into municipal drains, which then end up at the Puce River, which flows northerly up to Lake St. Clair. Likewise, the three catchments south of Talbot Street outland municipal drains, which ultimately end up at Canard River, and then which, which flows out to the Detroit River on the west side of the screen. So a chronology of events for the storm sewer system. In October 2015, like I talked about, the town initiated the Basement Flooding Protection Subsidy Program. In 2016, field investigations were completed, similar to what was completed for the sanitary sewer system. So flow monitoring was used to collect data for the storm system modeling. Manholes were inspected, approximately 400 of them, main purpose being to construct the storm model, but also when we were out there, taking a look to see if there are any defects in the manholes. And sewer camera work, about almost two kilometers worth of sewer, storm sewer was cammered to inspect for potential defects. From 2015 to roughly a few months ago, July 2018, we had built a storm drainage model to evaluate the system for future development and to evaluate its current performance. May 2017 to present, the town issued a municipal class environmental improvement to the South Talbot catchment storm drainage system. So that is this area in green, which is one of the more heavily populated areas in the Essex urban center. The purpose being to reduce the risk of flooding and property damage, and evaluate the system to ensure infrastructure is in place for full future development of that catchment. So the field investigations, like I said, first to inspect, the sewers were video inspected, almost about two kilometers of them, and the purpose being to find any defects in the, in the storm sewers. And then the, the interactive mapping that the town has of their sewer system was updated based on our field investigations. The hydraulic modeling, the purpose really of the hydraulic modeling for the storm system, so like I said, we did this for the sanitary system, but we're doing it again for the storm, was to reduce the risks of flooding and property damage during significant storm events, so, so storms say above two inches in rainfall. The long-term objectives was to provide storm infrastructure, one, for full future development within the catchment, and to provide a model for reviewing impact of future developments on the existing storm water drainage system. The storm system's a little bit different than the sanitary system in that it's much more complicated. The water essentially discharges to, to the municipal drains, which then outlet into natural water courses, which, for example, River Canard flows another 25, 30 kilometers downstream before it hits the, before it hits the, its discharge point into the lake. The sanitary sewer system essentially ends at the treatment plant. So there's lots of things downstream that can impact the storm sewer system. It's, it's a much more complicated system than the sanitary system. So this is just a rough picture of the storm sewer model that was built. You can see the five catchments there highlighted. So the benefits of the sewer study on planning and development, and I guess how Essex now, three years later, is better prepared today for extreme storm events than they were previously. So the integrated GIS and interactive map. We updated the interactive, the interactive map. The storm sewer system's a lot older than the sanitary system. It has many drainage tiles that were installed over the years as the town was built. The sanitary sewer system was relatively constructed, the majority of it in the 1980s, so it's not quite as old as the storm system. So as a result, some of the records aren't quite as accurate. So most of the time was spent updating these records, one, because it helps with planning decisions, and two, we need accurate records in order to build our hydraulic model. This just shows the manhole inspections that we did on the sanitary sewer system. So these have been linked to the town's interactive map, so now that they can collect any manhole within the town, and the manhole inspection report comes up for it, it tells it the condition of the manhole, and you can also see photos of the manhole. So that just mainly helps the town in planning. They don't have to go out in the field. They have this nice, unique tool that they can use, use in their office. The second is the sewer inspections for the camera work that were completed. So all sewers that were inspected were cammered or video inspected. They were linked to the town's GIS as well. Sometimes what happens with, with the camera work is someone does the camera work, and a few years later, it's difficult to find the videos, and the town has to pay again to find the videos. In this case, all the camera work has been integrated into the town's interactive map system, so that if they click the sewer link, if the, if the sewer has been cammered, the video will come up, so the town can then review it. So it's kind of a nice, easy place to keep all, all your information rather than, rather than, rather than on a bookshelf or somewhere where other people may not know. So this, ultimately, the sanitary sewer system mapping was updated, the town, on the town's GIS, to ensure that, this, this mainly provides two big benefits. It may not seem significant, but it really is. First, the administration and, and external consultants really can make more informed planning and future development decisions. If they're looking at interactive map where there's a few errors on it, it's difficult to, to make an informed, correct decision. When you have an interactive map that's, that has correct information on it, it's much easier to make a more informed decision. This is just showing the exact same thing, except for the storm sewer system where the interactive map was updated. So the main benefits for hydraulic modeling, the hydraulic modeling benefits, the main thing with the storm water and the sanitary sewer models, majority of municipalities don't have this tool, and it really is a great tool. And a lot of municipalities, especially up in the Greater Toronto Area, are now turning to these tools. So this tool really allows the town to take the entire sanitary and storm system into consideration for future development reviews. You can review the impact of future developments on the existing storm and sanitary sewer system, or sorry, yes, you can review the impact of future developments on the storm and sanitary sewer system. Few municipalities have hydraulic models for storm and sanitary systems, and without this tool, especially with the storm sewer system, it's very difficult for any engineer to make an informed decision about an impact on future development. Other municipalities in Essex County, actually, within the last couple of years, have been starting to do the exact same thing that we initiated here back in 2015, to develop the storm and sanitary hydraulic models. There's a newspaper article that came out about three weeks ago in the Windsor Star, and it highlighted all the great work that's been done in Lakeshore, LaSalle, City of Windsor, and DeCombe, and all the money they've, they've spent in building these, these sewer models, all the money they've spent in the master plans and planning for the future, and all the money they spent on new infrastructure. And they've kind of, kind of come after Essex has come. We haven't really got, Essex really hasn't gotten as much credit as, as, as probably deserved. So one of the main things, I guess, to note is, is how important those models are for engineers to make decisions, and how rare they are for municipalities to have them. The majority of municipalities that have them are up in the Greater Toronto Area. Very few have them down here, and actually, some of them are starting to kind of catch on and build these models, and the article from the Windsor Star a few weeks ago really spoke to that. And the second was updating their interactive sewer and drainage maps. Like I said, if you don't have any accurate records of your sewers and your drainage maps, it's very difficult to make informed planning decisions. Now, I'll just let Chris speak, some closing comments from town administration.
Sure. Thanks, guys. So I just wanted to kind of wrap up what StanTech and what the town have been working on. I thought it was an opportune time with this term coming to a close, and when this, with this being initiated within this term, and what we've done in these three years. So you've seen what we've done as far as infrastructure work, you've seen that on the ground, you've seen that, you know, it's easy to see. What you haven't seen is a lot of the stuff they talked about today. And I think it's really vital, we don't, administration typically doesn't pat themselves on the back a lot. This is something where the town really needs to give themselves some accolades here. What we've done with our storm water management and our sanitary, and setting ourselves up with respect to the modeling, and having those working models, and doing all these investigations, and tying it back to our GIS system, only puts us in a position to succeed in the future. We can, we can pinpoint any development, we can put any scenario within there, we know how it's going to affect both our sanitary and our storm systems. And as Mike alluded to, nobody else has that right now. In particular, like maybe in the Toronto region, but in my travels through AMO and other conferences, this is something very special here, and very, you know, what we've done the last three years, a lot of municipalities are just starting to do now. It's huge in terms of engineering and in terms of development, and making sure that we're protected, and making sure that our existing residents are protected, and that our future residents will succeed moving forward. So I just really wanted to stress that. In terms of future works, Mike noted that the EA that this council approved with respect to the southwest area will be completed this year. That preferred solution will be coming to council for review and approval very shortly. We want to start to implement Phase One. We were successful with the NEMP grant that, that we applied for, and we'll be putting out some media and a press release on that shortly as well. As well, not just what we've done, where we're going. So we're also committed to do Harrow Center this year, both storm and sanitary. So again, we'll have that same model, we'll have that same system and that same setup, so that any developments that are so that any developments that are coming, we know how that's going to affect the system, as well as where can we make our improvements? So it gives us that future capital look. What improvements are going to be the most effective, so where are we going to get the best bang for our buck? You know, we're not shooting blind here. We've got the data, we've got the model to show us, you know, by improving this sewer, by putting a pump station here, it's going to improve this region and this area for your future and existing residents. And then we're looking then ahead to next year's budget, and looking at doing Colchester's sanitary system, and ensuring that we know how it's functioning, what its capacity is at, what we can add to it, and again, how those developments will impact that. So we've really set ourselves on a positive road. Again, a lot of it's being done in the back rooms and, you know, on the computers and whatnot, and I just wanted to highlight that with council and with the residents to note that, you know, you really have done a lot, both sanitary and storm. Spent the money and the visions there, you know, to move forward and keep doing it, you know, we're just going to be better that way.
Thank you, Mr. Nepsey, and we thank StanTech for coming out and updating us this evening. We, that's a lot of information for us to take back, and I'm sure that you probably have a copy of this for us if we're looking to see the presentation in the future. So thank you for coming out this evening, and any questions or comments from council members? So Council Bjorkman?
Thank you through the chair. Thank you very much for coming out, talking to us tonight, and highlighting that. I was just thinking, it was four years ago that we were, I was campaigning and knocking on doors and talking to people about splash pads and parks, and they said, "Don't talk to me about that, talk about my basement." And that's where we were four years ago, and it was, we were in the middle of having this terrible flooding issue, and where we've come from, from that time, is terrific, and I'll touch all the wood I can find. The rains have been good to us as well, but it's work that we needed to do, and thank you very much for the time you've put in, and we look forward to the Harrow project beginning. Thanks.
Any further comments? Council Bondi?
Thank you, Chair Maloche. Just through you to, I think maybe Mr. Nepsey. So in theory, with this hydraulic model, we can look at the Essex Crossing subdivision and run numbers, and run, I don't know, just say 40-foot lots and 600 homes, or 50-foot lots and 400 homes, and run it through the model and see how it's going to impact our sewer system. Is that the tool that you, is that what we can do with it?
Through worship, that is something we can do. It all, you know, obviously, things cost money, and when we have a finalized development, depending on the scenario that the developer chooses to go with as far as lot coverage and lot sizes, absolutely, that's something that we lean on. StanTech to then to ensure and show us how that's going to affect our system, and make sure that everything else is protected, both sanitary and storm. So mostly, yes, but it has to be driven, you know, by the developer.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, to, through to Chris again, and the consultants, same consultants that are doing the Harrow study, correct, I believe? Is there any update that we have on the Harrow study? I see it's listed 2018, 2019. I know we haven't got a lot of rain. That's probably been not good in terms of the study, but is there any update that we can give to the residents in Harrow?
Through worship, as far as updates, the data collection phase has obviously started. The flow monitors are in place now, so we're looking to capture these fall wet weather events. You know, it's one of those where we don't want them, but we kind of need them in order to calibrate the model properly, but, you know, and then following that, the model can start to be built and calibrated that way, so things are moving.
Okay, with that, I'd entertain a motion, motion to receive, supported by Council Rogers, and all in favor. That's carried. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming out this evening. We have no unfinished business this evening, and we're moving on to reports from administration. First report, 8.1, is Planning Report 2018-38. It's in regard to site plan control approval for 1954990 Ontario Incorporated, and it has a bylaw attached to it, number 1744. Moved by Council Bondi, supported by Council Rogers. Any questions in regard to this item? So all in favor? It's carried. Thank you very much. Item 8.2 is Clerks' Report 2018-16, Appointment of an Election Compliance Audit Committee, and it has a bylaw that goes along with it, 1746. That administration is recommending we move on. Council Rogers and Council Bjorkman seconded, and this is to appoint Gerry Marion, Laurie Brett, and Cheryl Bondi as our members of the Election Compliance Committee, as well as bylaw 1746. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Our next report is 8.3, Chief Administrative Officer, and she's going to be giving us a verbal report on the agreement extension for animal control services for the town of Essex. Ms. Hunter?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Back a while, we had talked about animal control services and talked about different alternatives. At the end of the day, it was agreed that we go forward with basically what we have now. So we have been, over the course of a few months now, been working on the tender documents for that agreement. It is posted right now, but does not close until October 10th. So what we're asking for is to extend the existing contract with Essex County Canine Services on a month-to-month basis, under the same terms as we now have with them, and as soon as that we're able to bring this forward to council and get it, get a new contract in place, we will do that.
Council Bondi receives and supports. Can I get a second there? Council Snively? Any questions? Council Rogers? No. Okay. All in favor of the motion? That's carried. Thank you. Ava, any reports from our youth member?
No report for tonight.
No, thank you. No report this evening, and no report from county council either for this evening. So we're on to correspondence. We have two items of correspondence to be received. Both are just for informational purposes. Motioned by Council Bondi and supported by Council Bjorkman. Any questions? Council Volks?
Yes, thank you, Chair. In reading of this in terms of NAFTA, it says the federal-
Oh, sorry, sorry. Not that far yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking, I thought you were receiving both correspondence.
No.
Oh, okay.
The, so we're receiving Community Schools Alliance-
Yeah, okay.
-and the Local Planning Appeal Support Centre. Any further questions on those? All in favor? It's carried. Now we're on to the correspondence to be considered for receipt and support. So we've got Township of Amrit in regards to NAFTA dairy supply agreement. So Council Rogers is receiving and supporting. Council Volks is seconding. Any comments or questions? Council Volks?
Thank you, Chair. It says here in the correspondence, urging the federal government to not allow a foreign party to interfere with our dairy management. What is the foreign party that we're accepting and endorsing? Is that the Trump government in terms of NAFTA? Is that what that's saying?
I believe so.
Okay. Because I don't want to, I don't want to get involved with the politics of free trade in terms of the Trump government. He's a strong individual, and by endorsing this, you've got to be careful what you endorse. You just can't, I'm telling you, people, you just can't be throwing stuff up in the wind and going, "We support it." It's not as, it's not as simple as that. So we better make sure what we're doing. He's nobody to mess with, and we may be a small, little town here right now, but the people that work and intertwine with him are administrative people like the world's never seen before. And I'm just telling you, we've got to be careful what we're endorsing in terms of free trade agreements.
Thank you, Council Volks. That's good. Council Bondi?
Thank you, Chair Maloche. I'm wondering if we table it to the next council meeting, and we talk to our local representatives from the Agricultural Society about their positions on it. It's not going to hurt us to table it for two weeks, if council is willing.
Council, council. Okay, Council Bondi, you're tabling then? Council Rogers? You want to table that?
Sure.
Okay. And just leave one person, right? And we vote on that? Okay, so it's not voted on either, so, okay, it's tabled till next meeting. Thank you. We are on to committee meeting minutes. We have three sets of minutes there. Essex Accessibility Advisory Committee, the Coen Park Board, has two different dates, and Communities in Bloom from August. Council Rogers adopting all three committees' meeting minutes, supported by Council Snively, all in favor. It's carried. Nothing under financial, nothing under new business, or do we?
Yes.
Do we? We have something under new business, and I'll pass that over to Council Bjorkman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All of us on council received a note from Tamara Stomp this week regarding feasibility study to designate the western basin of Lake Erie as a national marine conservation area. The proposed marine park would include Point Peely National Park, the eight islands of the township of Peely, the waters of Pigeon Bay, which extend offshore of Essex at Colchester, Kingsville, Leamington to Amisburg. There was a study completed in 1997, which identified the western basin of Lake Erie as an area of particular significance that would qualify for such designation, and for many reasons, but also to ensure attention to water quality. And as we're all aware, local water quality off the shores of Windsor and Essex County remain of great concern. The letters of support they've already received are from the Western State Erie National Marine Conservation Area proposal, Tracy Ramsey MP, Dave Van Kesten MPP, Taras Natusak MPP, John Patterson, Mayor of Leamington, Nelson Santos, Mayor of Kingsville, Richard Wyman from Urka, Dr. David Suzuki, and the Water Brothers. So what we'd like to do tonight is pass a motion by our council to provide a letter of support that can simply state support for the undertaking of a feasibility study by Parks Canada to designate the western basin of Lake Erie as a national marine conservation area. Now, there were a lot of questions that had been brought forward to the committee when they were bringing this forward, and many of the frequently asked questions were, "Is this going to change how we use the western basin? Does this anything, does it do anything to fishing? Does it do anything to boating? Does it do anything to the things that we carry on right now?" And the answer to that is no. But it will restrict future development, may I say, of the water bed and the lake. So all of that then would need to be critiqued by this body. So it's a way to protect it, and a way to protect our water source. So I would like to make that motion that we use the template that was sent in the letter to receive and support this attempt to get the conservation.
So moved by Council Bjorkman, supported by Council Bondi. Any further questions or clarifications? Council Rogers?
I think another thing that it would restrict would be the use of wind turbines or the placement of wind turbines in that portion of the lake, and that would be a very good
Okay, any further comments, questions? All in favor of that motion? Carried unanimously. Under notice is a motion from Council Bondi. Is this first one, the one that you wanted to pass? No. This is in regard to Harrow Junior School, and I will pass that over to Council Bondi. Yes, okay, we need, seconded by Council Volks. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Just looking to see, and we got, we touched on it a little bit tonight, we got some dates of when the study is coming forward from Harrow, but there's some rumours going on around in Harrow, and I don't like to run with the rumours. I would like to have clarification here from administration. And what the rumours are, is what I'm hearing, is that around the junior school property, there's a lot of issues with the storm sewers and the sanitary sewers. So I think rather than wait another year and a half, it's good information for us to have. That area must get developed at some point, hopefully sooner rather than later. So collectively as a council, if we have information, if the candidates out there have information, the candidates can hit the ground running when the new council is elected, and we can know what we're dealing with, because that property is hours and hours of complaints for myself and for our bylaw department spending cleaning up that property. So rather than opening up a can of worms, it would be really nice to know a little bit about what's coming to us, so that people on council or candidates running for council can know what they're going to see in the 2019, 2020 budget. If there's something we can control, if it's going to take $100,000 to develop that property to fix all of the storm water or sanitary sewers, then it would be nice to know, and we, I'm not saying we have that number. We may not have that number, we may not have a whole lot of information right now, but I don't want to go with what the rumour is. So I've asked council to have some clarification, so that all of us are not dealing with just
Any comments or questions? Council Snively?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. We did have a developer that was interested in that property, and there was an offer that was presented and accepted with a condition in it. But what happened was they backed out for that simple reason right there, not a simple reason, it's a serious situation, where, maybe Chris can update us on this, if he could, about the sewer system there, it's not upgraded yet. So I think that had a lot to do with these people backing out, if I'm right or wrong there.
Mr. Nepsey?
Yeah, through you, Chair. I did talk to that same developer, that wasn't the explicit reason for not proceeding. It ended up just being not enough money for the amount of work that was, for that development. So are there storm water improvements to be made there? Absolutely. As far as sanitary issues, that's something new. I think with respect to StanTech and the team being in there now modeling and looking for improvements, that is, that is one of the areas we would look at making improvements on. It's something that we've discussed since that developer and development have come in and now left, is there an opportunity for the, you know, the town to improve, not the storm water on-site, but the outlet, the storm water, where that storm water would be going into? So that outlet, which is municipal infrastructure, is an opportunity to improve that? Yes. So that's something we're looking at in the 2019 budget. I would hesitate, I'm trying to wait, you know, it's kind of the chicken before the egg with respect to getting that model and that data, right? I like working off of the data and making sure what being suggested to improve there makes sense for the entire community. So in, I guess, directly answering you, yes, there are storm sewer improvements to be made in that area.
Any further questions? So the motion here is?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The motion is just to have a conversation, because I can't figure out how else to have a motion, have a conversation with my council colleagues about issues. So that's how I have to do it. So the motion can be rescinded, I guess? That's all. I have no other mechanism, so I do what I can.
Okay.
Yes, Chris provided the update.
So I guess the motion is to receive the verbal update from administration, okay? Support from Council, did I already have a support? Oh, Council Volks already supported that, thank you. So all in favor of that motion? It's carried. Thank you. Item 15.1.2, Council Bondi has asked to have that moved to October 1st, and she has another notice of motion that was added to the agenda earlier.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Maloche.
Do you have a second on?
Oh, it's just a notice of motion.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Maloche. That administration investigated an option of adding a retail revitalization grant to our CIP programs. And that's it? Yeah, I will send it to you. There was an article in the Windsor Star, give me the idea.
Thank you, Council Bondi. Sounds interesting. Okay, so we have reports and announcements from council members. I'll start to my far left, I'll start with Council Bjorkman. Thanks, Council Bjorkman.
And I know my colleagues on council have seen this, I know I've talked to administration about it, and I'm just wondering where it's going. And I was left with the impression that the representative was going to be here tonight, and he's not here, and that's in terms of highway- and he's not here, and that's in terms of Highway 3 and County Road 8, where a person, I'll just, I'll identify him as a person, because I really don't know who he is or what he represents, walked into a development area and started developing the land without no endorsement of the town of Essex. Brought loads and loads and loads of gravel-
Council Volks, Council Volks, I have to interrupt you.
Sure.
This is not for topics-
No, but it's council updates.
It's announcements.
I've been working on it. It's what's about. Council updates is in terms of what council's been doing.
Okay, so give us the update, I guess.
The update is this, they're putting sheds in there and they got no respect for our planning department of the town of Essex. They got to take them out of there. Until they go, they got to back the bus up, they got to work with their planning department, they got to respect Rita, they got to respect Jeff, and then move forward. They just went in there, developed the land, dropped the sheds in, and put their for-sale signs up. Nobody in the town of Essex even knew what they were doing. And that's as true as I'm sitting here. No respect, and they're not here tonight, but no respect for our planning department, this council, or the corporation of the town of Essex. Whoever those people are, I'm requesting, and I'm hoping council would support, as of business date tomorrow, they pack up their game and they move it out of town until they recognize our procedures and processes. It's deplorable what they did to our planning department. I don't know who they think they are, but I think I'll just go dump some gravel tomorrow somewhere in the town of Essex, maybe on the ball diamond or something, just open up a business out. What the hell? Nobody's doing it.
Council Volks, can we have Mr. Nepsi give you an update on, or give us all an update? Oh, sorry, we can't. Because this is announcement only, it's just, it's not about reports, so. Okay?
So that's all I'm asking. I'm just asking that that person's identified to move everything out of there until they get full endorsement of the planning department, council, and administration to proceed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Why have a planning department if you can just put whatever you want up, wherever you want?
I think we all agree on that.
Thank you. And my last issue is, in terms of, to Mr. Ogier, was the, and I know you've been really, really busy, Rob, with the election and Shelley, but did we ever get a chance to send that letter to the Health Minister in terms of our deplorable conditions in our emergency rooms? And if not, I understand why we haven't. I've never seen so many emails go to any given department as lately.
That's why you got to take that word, reports. You got to take that word, reports.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I will check to ensure, but I believe it did go out to the new minister to the, and whose name escapes me at the moment, I apologize, but-
Okay, no, 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 please don't apologize, because I've seen what you've been going through, and I get it. I do, Rob, and Shelley too. And I appreciate your patience and everything, so if we can put that on the whiteboard somewhere, and if it keeps dropping down, it keeps dropping down, but I just want to make sure we stay on top of that, if we could. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Volks, and I'll move over to Council Rogers. Thank you, Council Rogers. Council Snively? Thanks, Council Snively. Council Bondi?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Just to note, when letters go out to people, I think we're supposed to get them. We're supposed to get them either by email or back on our agenda. So when we get that, that'll be confirmation to me that that letter has gone out, because that's something that I think we initiated as a council. Another thing, there's a lot of attention going on municipal elections, but I think some of us, we need to stop and think about school board trustee elections, they're coming up. I was a little irritated this past week when I read in the paper, "Public Board Announces LaSalle Land Purchase for New School." I just want to throw the question out there. The question that all of us need to be asking in our Harrow community is, where's our high school in Kingsville? When is that shovel going in the ground? And I know we can't talk about it as a council, but it's certainly a hot topic in Harrow. And, you know, whatever happens with the high school property is whatever happens there, but our students deserve that new school that we were promised. We've lost two schools. And over this past summer, those two schools have took up countless hours of my time with complaints for property standards, long grass, and enough is enough. So school board trustees, I want to call out to you, my trustees that are running in the election, where's our school?
Thank you, Council Bondi. And it comes down to me, I only have one announcement to make, and that is about the McGregor Mug Run, and that's going to happen on this coming Saturday. It's also a race and a beer fest at the same time. So it starts off with a race in the afternoon. There'll be some road closures in the McGregor area. It's happening at Coen Park, and you can either be in a 10-kilometer or a 5-kilometer or walk. The money raised will go to some, I'm, to be honest with you, I don't know what it's going to this year, but it's always gone to a very good charity, and I'm sure it will again, something in the community this year as well. So it's this Saturday, September 22nd. There's some excellent bands playing in the evening as well, and we hope you come out and support the McGregor Mug Run. This is the seventh annual. Thank you. Council Bjorkman, did you want to mention something there too?
Yeah, I'd like to rescind my pass. I was supposed to mention, the Essex Center BIA is hosting the Fall Into Local this Friday from 4:00 to 7:00 downtown. The main street will be closed down again. Rio Michaels Band will be playing once again, and have a lot of vendors and stuff out on the street, food, and come on out, enjoy yourselves, and visit downtown Essex Center. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Bjorkman. And last but not least, I'm going to ask our student council, Ava Hoffman, if she has anything that she wants to announce. Sorry? Did I ask you?
Yeah, I don't have any.
Well, that was business, this is events. I'm going to give her another opportunity. Thank you. We're into, so we are now into bylaws, and I'm going to pass it over to our clerk, Robert Ogier.
Under 17.1.1, bylaw 1748, the confirming bylaw for third and final reading.
Moved by Council Volks, supported by Council Bondi. All in favor? That's carried.
Bylaw 1749 for the declaration of surplus lands for two readings this evening.
Moved by Council Snively, supported by Council Bjorkman. All in favor? It's carried.
And 1748, the confirming bylaw from the proceedings of this September 17th regular meeting for two readings.
Moved by Council Rogers, supported by Council Bjorkman. All in favor? That is carried.